301. First thing on the agenda number eight is county law enforcement services. I guess we turn it back over to you two.
I don't know where you want me to start. You want me to just pick up where we left off last week?
That would be good.
Okay, what I've handed out here is just a breakdown in costs. Initial startup costs for a deputy per year and what it would cost for deputies per year. Now, some of the materials and services that we have listed out here are going to be one-time costs, like a ballistic vest is going to be every four to five years and then as needed. There's going to be costs that are reoccurring every year such as uniforms. Every year we order two pair of pants and two long sleeve shirts and two short sleeve shirts. So that's going to be a continued cost. But as you see, for a complete deputy outfitted without a vehicle, that's going to be a hundred, just about $101,000. And that includes the hourly pay rate. And these hourly pay rates is at our top step. That's not beginning deputies. This is our top step, so we have maximum cost. Overtime cell phone, longevity certification pay, holiday pay, payroll tax per life insurance, health insurance, workman's comp, work benefits, and air link. Those are just some of the costs. Now, there are some here we may have forgot and so there could be minor additions in the long run. And then materials and services, what we have is uniforms. Pretty much that's a reoccurring cost per year. Equipment to include ballistic vests, a trauma plate. Trauma plate unless it is struck by a projectile will be in good order for the lifetime of an officer. The soft plates are, their guarantee is five years, but we have them replaced every four years for the safety of the deputies. And then you have your duty belt equipment, which is holster tasers. Glock Model 22. And then I don't know what the town carries right now, but we want to be universal. And the reason why we're universal, if we're together, we get into a gunfight or something like that, this officer goes down and I run out of bullets. I can use his weapon. I can use his magazines, just interchangeable with my weapon. If you have a nine millimeter and I'm carrying a forty caliber, you're, we're out of luck, so. And that includes a shotgun AR-15, body camera, ammunition to train quarterly for every deputy per year. We have a mobile data terminal, which is referred to as MDT. Those are the computers that go into cars. So you have your computer dispatch system right there. A lot of information that doesn't need to go out over the air. It just read right off the terminal. You can add notes on the terminal to dispatch. Dispatch can add notes on the terminal to you. It saves a lot of air traffic. And as we all know, that some of the bad guys out there are listening on scanners, so the less they know, the better off we are. Flashlight, stingers, investigative tools. And then we have animal control, which is a baby. That's your dog collar. Or what's it called? A pole collar? Pole. We add the loop around the, yeah, choke stick. Your ORS books yearly, your pocketbooks that are deputies can carry with them. Computers, printer supplies, office supplies. And then you have your travel expenses. Now, we all know that training that we get is not usually local. It's DPSST in Salem or oftentimes it's out of state. So you have your travel expenses, your mileage, your fuel. And then your per diem. And then we have our, we'll have our towing and storage fees, so. That's just part of the cost. Paul, if you would cover the next part of it, the cost per deputy.
So that, that cost per deputy, what I did is I took the total overall materials and services that the county currently uses and I divided that by the number of deputies that we have. Because there's no way to break this out line by line and figure out how much each deputy benefits. Because this year we replaced three vests, next year we may replace four vests, the following year may be two vests, and then that rotation. So it's not been every year we buy nine vests, nine anything on here. And so the cost per deputy on our materials and services is $25,592, which is basically everything that the sheriff just went through on the uniforms, equipment, and then the additional light items that are set here. So there's a percentage for each person to use their portion of those materials and services. Now, they don't actually have a credit card or anything to spend this money. This is being done on the back end of it, which is what I do more often than not on the accounts payable. So I order, I put out a sheet every year, usually in June. They write down what they need for uniforms and then I order all of it at one time and then that comes out of the line item for them. And so that's the way that the county budgets. Ours is quite a bit more detailed than the town's budget as far as light items and transparency on what exactly we're spending money on. So that's just a cost per person would be $25,592 for materials and services. And then if you just do the math and multiply it, then that's your, what your full deputy cost would be.
And then we have our vehicles. Vehicle costs averages about $32,000 per year. Let me take that down. Purchase value for a new vehicle is $32,000. So have that vehicle totally outfitted is an additional $37,600. That includes your emergency markings. Because in Oregon, it's mandated you have markings on the side of your vehicle. You have the lights and a sign. Those are mandatory for patrol deputies. So the outfit that is emergency markings, lighting, audio warning device with your assignment, your radio. We have radar, MDT docking station. That's a docking station that your computer fits on that you can communicate with dispatch. You get your calls. A secure prisoner compartment, a dash camera, which is audio and video system, and then the toolbox and the watch. We figured that if we could get one of those per year and in the meantime possibly, because we have, we have new vehicles coming in, we have older vehicles going out. I don't know what the, the light average expectancy for these old vehicles coming out, but if there's possibility that we could use those older vehicles until we cycle new ones in, that would be a cost savings for both the county and the town. But the problem with that is this. Our maintenance schedule for each vehicle, the cost per vehicle is $3,900 a year. And that's just maintenance for per vehicle. Up in North Lake, it seems to be a little bit higher than it is down here because we're driving on dirt roads, gravel roads. And that real silty, fine sand and dirt gets into the locking mechanism, causes a lot of problems. We've had situations where prisoners are in the back. We can't get the back doors unlocked because that silt gets into those locking mechanisms and you're using slim jims trying to get them locked. So there is a higher cost for maintenance up in North Lake. And then we're looking at possibly a part-time administrative assistant. There's going to be more work for supervision, more work for office management. And so a part-time clerical assistant to include retirement benefit, medical benefit, all the benefits that deputies have, so on and so forth. This is what is $21,000. Administrative policy implementation, expectations, enforcement, review scheduling, discipline. Basically, your supervision of the deputies' administrative costs. Possibly $8,500 that can, that's to be negotiated if possible. But if, that's in a nutshell. That is your basic breakdown as to the cost. Like I said earlier, you know, there's probably going to be some things that we missed and didn't cover, minor things. As far as the high-cost items, I think we've got it all summed up right here. So based on that, with what the budget, total budget for what would that be, Paul, for the $605,000 or just the rest of this? That's for 2019. That's for 2019, two thousand. I've started working on a contract. There's a number of things in this contract that we could talk about later. Basically, it's just definitions of town, county agreement, services to be rendered, the recitals, there's services provided, that's in the contract. There's partnership between the town and the county constraints, which is an agreement with Oregon Constitution. Article 11, Section 10, which says that towns can contract with sheriff's offices. A non-discrimination clause, that we won't discriminate against anybody for employment purposes. Arbitration and attorney fee requirements in the event that the county or the town default on the contract. There's an arbitrated process that we would go to to get recovery. Facilities and equipment provided, supervision and control. Training aspects, which we'd be responsible for for the new deputies. Workman compensation, liability. Assignment and delegation, terms and termination of the contract at the, at the end of the agreed minimum contract. 180 days, at the end of the five-year period that the town or the county has 180 days from a certain date. And I have some dates in here that I had just written in for the sake of having a date, but that'll be negotiated between the town and the county as to what is applicable. That the cost of the services will be X number of dollars to be paid quarterly. And I don't know what your quarterly dates would be, so I have in here September 30th, December 31st, March 31st, June 30th, which is all negotiable as to what works for the town and so on and so forth. You have, after the terms of the five-year contract, every March 15th, the county will provide the town with cost of retaining four deputies and the cost is going, which will include policing for the town of Lakeview. That will be provided March 15th. By May 1st, the town can, has an annual option saying, we agree or we disagree that we were going to continue with this contract or we're going to terminate our contract. And then there's, obviously during the fiscal years of 2019, 2020, there's a monetary amount. And then the fiscal year for 2020, 2021, basically it's kind of vague. It's the county, where the town agrees to pay increases if necessary to sustain four deputies. So if you have cost of living or whatever the case is. And if there's no increases, there's no increases. You don't pay any increases on that. But we all know that during contract negotiations, I negotiate for higher wages and stuff like that. In our contract, I believe it's, they get a minimum of 1.4% cost of living, up to include 3% if the cost of living is higher than 3%. So it would be increases along those lines. And then we have our separability modification and notice to each other. It'll be hand-delivered in person or it'll be delivered first class mail. So as I stated previously, I think with this contract, like I say, it's just a work in progress. I think I have it pretty much done, whereas we can start looking at it if that's the way that the town chooses to go. We'll look at it, come to some kind of agreement. And then if we agree, then my vision is it'll go from the town council to the commissioners. It'll be either agreement or disagreement. And if there is an agreement, it will go to legal. It'll go to your legal, our legal, and it'll be ironed out as a contract. Basically, to make this as simple as possible, in a nutshell, is the town provides their public service budget to the county to provide services for policing to the town of Lakeview. Can you think of anything other than that?
Seth, do you say stinger in here?
Stinger?
Is that like a taser?
No, a stinger is just a little TV high voltage flashlight. It works off a lithium battery and it's very, very bright. It's called a stinger.
I just hadn't heard that for a while. So, well, do you guys use tasers or no?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
We have the X.
And it's on there.
Which one is it?
It's the X.
Oh, X2. I missed that, sorry.
Now, this part on clerical assistance, is that what Chris is doing over there for the city now?
Yes, sir.
Would she just transfer over?
That's my thought.
I was just going to ask that question last time. I spaced it because we got onto something else.
And then my thought process too, with the integration of Officer Sizma, there would be, there would be no probationary period. We worked with him long enough to know what he's like, who he is. I'm thinking that he would just move over, become a part of the sheriff's office. He's got 10 years on. You find that area where he fits in seniority and he would fit right in that area. He wouldn't have to start at the bottom of the barrel and then be put on 18 months probation, lose seniority and such. I think to be fair, you know, we just put him right where he fits in. He brings over his, the benefits that he has with him, meaning vacation leave, sick leave, holiday pay. And then he would assume our contract. And when I say contract, I'm talking about a collective bargaining agreement contract. And then the contract with the town, my guess, it would be null and void at that point. So the benefits that he has as being the town employee, for instance, the membership to the gym, he would no longer retain that. And then nobody in the sheriff's office would have any benefits that the town offers right now.
Now, this 605 is for four options, right?
Four and a half with that halftime clerical.
Okay.
And that would include the purchase of a new vehicle to start kicking this off.
What do you propose to do with the older vehicles?
Are you, the town vehicles?
Yeah.
I would think to auction them off, take that money, put it in maybe a vehicle budget that we can buy new vehicles along. You're just going to save it for next year or something like that. And then the ones that, that are, say you get to that rotation where we buy a new vehicle for the town. My guess is because we're not going to be going to the distances that the deputies go, that the rotation, our rotation is every four years. My hopes would be the rotation for town vehicles. Now, when I say town, they're all sheriff vehicles, but for the vehicles they use by the deputies for the town would be more or less maybe six or seven years. That's just a rough estimate because I don't think you're going to be getting the mileage and the hard miles. You're going to get some hard miles on them, but not as hard as 100 miles an hour. 90 miles a day.
So you're predicting a new vehicle, getting rid of all of our vehicles, and you're going to have four new officers driving what you guys already have plus that one car?
No, that, what I'm thinking, and this is just a vision. I don't know how it's going to work out. You know, we're going to come across hurdles that we're going to have to deal with when we get there. My hope is this. We buy one new vehicle out of this budget this year. And then because we are buying four new vehicles, that we have four vehicles that are coming offline. What we would normally do with those vehicles is we would auction them and that money would go into the general fund. I may be wrong, but those four new vehicles, or the four old vehicles, if we could use those, three of those, for the new officers and then down the, next year buy a new vehicle and cycle one of those out. And then the next year buy a new vehicle and cycle another nut until there's four new vehicles for the town of Lakeview, if that makes sense. These vehicles here, now if that doesn't work, we may have to take the current town vehicles and maybe just strip the emblems and put sheriff's office on it in the different colorings. It'll be simple. It'll just be like ours. It'll be a star and just say sheriff. The county sheriff, because I know if we have Lakeview PD vehicles going out to the west side and I'm calling people, what are you doing out here? And there's going to be complaints. What's he doing out here? We don't want, you know, we shouldn't be out there.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, but I would think that it would be wise to use some of our vehicles for a couple of years and kind of catch up, even though you have to change the decal.
Sure. We can do that. Or we can use what old vehicles are coming off our line. I'm thinking if they are, if that is appropriate, that's what I'm talking about, in using our vehicles. You don't have to worry about decal. They're ready to jump in. They already got docking stations. And so they'll save a little bit of money with docking stations and so on and so forth. Now, if we use the town vehicles, there's no docking stations in there. And there's just certain things that they don't have that we have that we will have to help with.
And that's about a thousand a car to put the docking station on?
About 2,400.
2,400. And then just so you know, I don't know if you know that, but we do have seven MDTs.
Well, you do.
That came from Clarkland County. And I don't know if it's the same car you use or not, but at least that's something to think about.
Okay. One of the problems that we ran into that we tried to stay consistent with is prior to me getting here, we were buying, say we had 11 computers. We were buying three this year, three this year, and then two the next year, whatever the case was. Well, what we found out is the software was different. It was upgraded software. Every time you buy a computer, the year ahead, the software is upgraded and it's not compatible with the other one. So that was the problems that we were running into. And that's still, that might be a problem with some of the MDT.
I'm sure it probably is. I just wanted to let you know if you do that second.
Yeah, I'd love to go.
At the end of the contract, and if whoever on the council at that time or in charge here of the town decides to try to get a police force of their own again, would we be able to, would the officers have a choice of coming here? Or would they just, would you maintain those officers? Or how would you do that?
No. My vision is this. Let's just say at the end of five years, the council decides, okay, we want the police department back. What I would suggest is, first of all, before you do that, is find the chief of police. Find, find somebody who is already qualified to be a chief of police and has gone through the training, executive training, leadership. Get them in place. So you guys are happy with that leadership. And then we reintegrate back into the PD. So the last four people hired would be the last, or would be the people coming back to the PD.
And then all equipment purchased. Because this would be a standalone budget. This would not be in conjunction with our current budget. There'd be a standalone budget. And so anything purchased out of that, if this ever went back and transitioned the other direction, anything purchased for the five years out of that budget would come along with those people.
And you, we can contractually make sure that that happens. That if it does terminate, that equipment purchase under the budget reverts, you know, with obviously the town paying the cost of re-decaling and changing stuff back. So that contractual can be handled fairly easily between myself and Mr. Bailey when this thing gets approved. So that's very doable. So if you're worried about, you know, not having the necessary equipment, because obviously four new vehicles or everything else, if you decide to take it back, would be a huge outlay. That would eat your entire budget in one year. That would be a necessary clause I'd want to have in there if you guys are going to go this direction or not.
So it is definitely a five-year contract? Because we've said all along that it might be two years or whatever, but I'm not, I'm not hearing that now. So it's definitely a five-year?
That's, there's no, there's no set, whatever, it's whatever the, you guys can set it up for whatever both sides can agree to. There isn't like a mandatory three to five years. It's more typical to do it because of the admin costs and everything else of doing this. Because we start the transition, it takes a year or two just to get things up and running usually just because of, so if you do it too short-term, you're going to have some pretty large capital outlay.
It's a lot of money.
Exactly.
I have in this contract that I've started writing a minimum of five years. And the reason why I have this, exactly why what Mr. Hamilton said, is you get two years down the road, you're just getting your feet on the ground, getting well. You're cutting the teeth, these new officers and stuff. And now you transition back, I don't think it's going to be beneficial to the town to do that. I think if five years are going to be seasoned enough and have enough experience that they'll be transferred from, let's just say, one police department to another police department, their experience, their discipline, they know the laws, and they're ready to go, so. But the thing, again, like I expressed last time, if there is re-integration back into the police department, we have to think of two things. First of all, we cut the police department in half. The services that you would currently have, now you're cutting it in half. And then we have that segregation again, that here's the town of Lakeview, here's Ninth Street. Here's a call that comes in, well, we're not going to it. It's the city call. But we're not going to that. It's the county call. And there's that segregation. And I'm not trying to convince you one way or another. I'm just saying, these are things that we need to think about and they're realistic. And if there's a call that comes out, say now, it's who's ever available. I don't care where it is. If it's in the town or it's in the county, you're going to it. And if it's an emergency call, there's never been a segregation. It's anybody who's available to us. And that's never been considered.
And I do believe the county and the county OSP and town, and town all have mutually agreements that we do do things like that just because of, like you said, issues, you know, active shooter, really serious situations. It's all hands on deck. It's not a, or you end up with a situation where forest fires bearing down on Paisley or something like that. We've even sent people in the past to things of that nature just because that's what, that's what you do in situations like that. So that wouldn't change whichever route you would go on this. So legally, that's not going to change. Oregon doesn't play this game of jurisdictional fights anymore because you're not supposed to.
I'd say I don't think that emergency situation things ever change because it'd be basically the same thing when I worked on the reserve tier with the police department. That if there's an emergency, the city handled the call wherever it was at until deputy got here.
The whole idea is providing safety to the citizens and making sure that our fellow officers say too.
If you go over one more time, you know, our little circle with our town.
Yeah.
We would have two deputies.
Well, there was a complaint earlier that the circle was too small. So I'm making the circle bigger, okay? This is my vision. I, I would divide the county into four sectors. One sector would be the town of Lakeview. Another sector would just be the west part of Lakeview to the boundary, the east part of Lakeview to the boundary, and then North Lake, which has, won't have any effect on the SLSR's emergency call or something. What I would do is if you have, we're going to have more than likely three people available at any given time. And I'm talking about road deputies, primary call responders. At times, we might have five or six or seven. And that's not taken in consideration under Sheriff Bobble and myself. So hypothetically, if we have three deputies working the south end, I'm going to have one assigned to the town, one assigned to west, and one assigned to east. Now, that's not including him or myself. So in the event there was an emergency call up over in Paisley and all three of them went to Paisley, you have under Sheriff Bobble and myself here to handle the calls for service in this area here. in this area here, to include Lakeview. So there always will be, if there's a deputy on duty, there's always going to be one available to handle calls in the town. That's not, that's going to be nondiscriminative. We go where the call is. Now, that deputy, that lone deputy, might be over here handling a call, but if there's a priority or emergency call, you just blow it back into here and people start, and then we always have OSP to assist. And I have to say, the relationship with Oregon State Police right now has never been better.
Okay, I'm going to ask a big question because, and maybe I don't understand the reasons for it, but you said the town will take their old vehicles and auction them off and put the money into a fund to buy cars or vehicles at a different time, you say that, is that right?
That's just a vision, yes.
Well, that vision doesn't hold true for the county, though. The county sells their vehicles and the money goes into general fund.
Right. But this, this is going to be, what I'm told, like, he is the budget group, so correct me if I'm wrong, but everything that the town puts into policing is going to be a stand, standalone account. And that includes auctioning your vehicles, that will go into that standalone account. Now, if you guys wanted to go into the general fund, that's entirely up to you guys. But I'm just thinking, it's police equipment, if we auction it off, let's use it for police equipment, and it'll help to buy what is needed and cut the costs of maybe next year, if that makes sense.
So it's really, it'd be almost like a reserve fund that would be set up within that budget, that would be a carry forward. It would, that, that fund wouldn't zero out unless the termination of the agreement and then the town took back whatever was remaining in the, in the budget. But that money would carry forward, and then if you have a crash and you've got a...
It's not what the county does, no.
What's that?
It's not what the county does.
Well, it is in a sense, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than, yes, that money goes back into general fund, but then when they refund the vehicle, the fleet for the following year, that money comes right from general fund to fund the fleet. So, so yes, it goes to general fund when we auction our vehicles, because that's after the fact, after budgeting. And so that's our pot of money for the future year of budgeting for our fleet.
And I would like to stress this point here. I don't want to see the county have to surplus funding law enforcement for Lakeview, if that makes sense. And what I don't want either is the monies that the town of Lakeview puts in for policing to get lost and go to the benefit of the county. I think that money needs to stay in there for the benefit of the town. If there's surplus, it should be rolled over and used for the next year, that that money stays into that, that specific standalone fund where there's, there's no benefit of the county for where this money's going to be, there's surplus, that the benefit should go to the town of Lakeview.
One thing we haven't addressed, and I'm not sure how it will work, we have a building there, the EMF building, all the dispatching comes out of there now, do we, does that stay intact as it is? Do we share that cost of running all that dispatch? Our group rule was shaky, we said no.
Well, there's another animal in the zoo. Because the way we're set up now is the dispatch center is under a criminal justice agency. That's how we use our LEDs and our NCIC, and our agreements with CGS, which is the LEDs or Criminal Justice Information Center, has to be either a special district or a law enforcement agency. Once the city or town police is dissolved, there's no longer the criminal justice agency administrator for that, for our clinics for a deal on computer systems. So either the town has to form a special district like Klamath and other places to get all of our ORIs and our, our clearances for using the law enforcement data system, or we swing over to the sheriff's office and he takes over the control of the op center. Which means if, when that slides over, our employees now can work fifty-six hours a week, and we have two dispatchers on. As soon as we go into that realm, you're limited to forty hours a week, before we hit overtime. You've got to add, more than likely, right now, fire's paying half of their wages. So more than likely, when, if we move over to the sheriff's office, we'll probably be down to one dispatcher. Burns has one, several, but you probably only have one dispatcher on. And I would say we probably have to hire at least three or four more dispatchers, because you have to give them fifteen-minute breaks and you have to give them lunch breaks. So someone has to come in and relieve them, who is certified to be in that position while that person takes breaks. And so, right now, we have six employees. If we went to the forty-hour work week, we'd probably have to go, probably eight employees. Which means more than likely, this town will be funneling over total, probably a million dollars, another three or four hundred thousand for dispatch. And then you have all the radio equipment that belongs to the police department, our microwaves, radio systems, you know, the town doesn't own a mountaintop, we just own the equipment in our building, which is under the auspices of the police. 911 has no dealings with that, it's, through the Homeland Security Grant that we got in '04, it was all purchased by the police department, and it's property of the town police department.
So this sounds like it's a pretty big thing we have to consider.
Well, yeah, I think it can, it can go that way, it could stay over there, but we still have to, either you want to make a special district, which is going to be a big process to go through, or it's going to have to be absorbed by a criminal justice agency, because of your LEDs and your...
I'm confused about the eight-hour shifts.
Or ten-hour shifts, okay, or, you know, whoever works...
Scott, he's wondering why, why the hours difference between the fifty-six versus the forty, what's...
Because half of their duties is firefighters, and firefighters fall under a special exemption to work fifty-six hours a week.
Versus forty?
Versus forty.
And so it's just how the town has got hype, that's, so basically, because the town has a hybrid position of a dispatcher slash firefighter, that's why it's getting away with fewer employees, because they can work fifty-six and not be subject to the hour.
But you're also paying a much higher wage for a policing fire versus a dispatch.
Absolutely.
Or a dispatch fire versus a dispatch.
And just a correction, it's a like forty-sixty is how we have the budget split. So it's not fifty-fifty, so it's forty for fire and sixty for...
Correct.
Yeah.
And just the, and the surtax from the state would probably not cover your payroll because we're, we're, right now, I've got against the fence because we are...
We're going to hold.
Yeah, we go into holding here from the nine-one-one tax. And the fees that we live will be on to the different departments.
What would that do to the volunteers?
They will be volunteers.
They will still stay volunteers.
Well, the fire department will be cut out.
Yeah, still the fire department, okay.
So I don't know if the town wants to retain three firefighters, or they go strictly all volunteer, that's, and have a chief, an assistant chief that are paid.
Well, I think we need to, need to entertain that, sure, but that's, yeah.
But so, there's some more stuff that's concerning that we have to at least address about the dispatch center. If you want the special district, it would be, you can probably answer this more, it would be countywide, you have to have your own board of directors.
Correct, it becomes an entire, it's like the cemetery district or any of the others, it's a full-blown, it's its independent agency at that point, so it's kind of a...
But that, not already a living animal in, like Thomas Creek, Westside, Paisley?
Right, but it's, it's quite a bit different when you have to form, because our, our 911 center here serves the entire county, so it would have to be voted on, I don't have all the parts in front of me, but it's, it's not just like forming in one area, this is, because of how our 911 stuff works, it would be really almost another county body at that point. It would replace the intergovernmental agreement that we formed to do this to, so it's not, it's not, it's not impossible, but the logistics, I mean, really, we need to look at the logistics of what's the most cost-effective. Like you said, probably another work session and some research on what that looks like as far as...
You'd have an administrator, administrative assistant, yeah. So now you're pumping out the money for an administrator, which most in the state are six stages, is normal.
Scott, when you say form a special district, that'll eliminate, like, the fire dispatch the way it is now?
Well, it would be its own little animal, the town wouldn't be in charge of it, it would be a special district, nor would the county, probably, be its own private...
It'd be like a board of directors.
Yeah.
Okay, but what I'm, what I'm getting at, is the way it is now, those dispatchers jump off to death, jump on a truck, they move the fire.
No, that wouldn't happen anymore.
But that wouldn't happen anymore?
That'd be gone, no.
Okay, so that's going to change your fire rating as well?
Not if you have a fire chief, like, full-time chief and a part-time chief, if you've had those people there at the station, and it would, and it may not change that much anyway.
You'd think someone would be there forty-four.
Correct. But I, but I think, again, I don't think the information's in front of us right now, so I would make the recommendation, if you're going to look at doing this, not say no, not make any decision right now one way or the other, I would recommend another work session so that you can get the information in front of you, because it's another set of variables. Plus, I think the county needs to see if they're willing to take it on, so to see if that's an option at all versus a special district.
Are you talking about dispatch?
Yes.
I don't think that, I mean, that's too much at one time. I mean, you've got to cut your feet and get the police department going before you take it off.
That's the problem, if we get rid of the police department, we have to deal with the dispatch at the same time, they, they have to be in a link together, and it's not as negative, it's just, once we pull the law enforcement agency out, we no longer have the authority to operate the dispatch. That's our basis for doing what we're doing. So it's something that probably needs to be factored into the calculation for what's going on, because like I said, otherwise, it's 911 disappears. And obviously, we can't do that, or we get sideways with the state, and then we're all back into the, Mike, you weren't here during the, there was a pretty big kerfluffle between all the different parties about eight, nine years ago, over that, over some turf type battles, and so that, there was an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement that was formed, and it was quite a mess, and we got the state breathing down all our necks. So regardless of whatever process goes forward, we want to make sure that we're not going to trigger a state audit or some kind of, so it's something Jim Bailey and I probably need to discuss about. And I would tell you, a lot of, a lot of communities, the sheriff is the one that runs the dispatch center, that is actually more the norm than the, so, it's just like I said, it's a variable we hadn't even thought about, so it's probably something we need to have some more discussions about.
But I have never known of a dispatch center that dispatches with firemen and doesn't have dispatchers.
Correct. No, there's a...
Fire dispatch.
It, it, yeah, Lakeview's unique in that, so that's kind of the...
And really, I mean, I think their wages, just off the top of my head, is like sixteen and forty-two an hour, which is not, not much more than...
There's a, there's a big loss in our IBC 911 operations, because as Scott knows, him and I have served on it, just as Jeff said, I was on that committee that worked for the town of Lakeview, trying to bring all the entities together, the fire districts from all over Lake County. And it's a pretty big operation, has been going in the hole for years, it's through our integral operations of fire and dispatch that we've been able to maintain it, we've been culling at the county for years, have gone to them and said, please resurrect your 911 emergency fees that you had years ago that you rolled into your general fund, because we're in dire hurt, so, you know, if we turn things over to you, that dire hurt goes to you too, and so. But then we've got to decide, asset sales, do we want to just give everything up, our police department and everything, including our assets, do you want our police vehicles? Do you want our dispatch center? No, there's value in those, and maybe we are to all have a lot of work sessions, because I went back through the towns that have agreed on this here in Oregon, and there's a lot of time spent on it, it doesn't happen, and we've had two work sessions spent on entirely listening to you deliver to us what you can do with our six-hundred and five-thousand dollars. We heard you in the last meeting tell us that you are no longer going to provide services, and I want to hear that once again, exactly, or I'll go back and review it, but there are certain, there are certain, you were fixing the fire, a little under oath, and I, I just, I, we need to backtrack, because here's where we're at.
Mike, don't get mad.
No, I'm not mad, no, no.
This is a discussion.
This is an emergency type situation, and that's why we came to you.
Don't take it personal.
It's not personal, I'm describing exactly where we're at, we're in dire straits right now, as we all know, the council is aware of that, and we sent our town manager to talk to you three weeks ago to set up a meeting to where we could come to some agreement to provide your supervision over our police department, as we had all decided to move forward with what we've got, the police department and recruiting. You said just in the last meeting, you thought when Will Behan was here, that was what, just a few months ago, things were on the road, so we're not too far back.
Yeah, you don't have a police department anymore.
That's right.
Will Behan had three officers plus him.
And we're right, yeah, and we want to rebuild it, but we ask you, our, Roberta was to ask you, and I guess it fell on deaf ears, because you came and asked for our entire budget in five years, what it would take while we searched for...
No, wait, 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 wait. I didn't ask for anything, I simply...
I didn't say you asked, I said, Roberta asked.
Didn't you just say that?
No, I said, Roberta came to you and asked, yeah, you heard something different, Roberta came to you and asked for short-term, and you gave five years.
That is my short-term.
What services will you provide to the town of Lakeview without and with?
I think I've already explained it.
Can you go over that one more time? Because I want to know what the county will provide for its citizens in Lakeview, Oregon, and you as a sheriff will provide. I also, I've asked the manager and, I had asked for the town attorney to give us, and I think all of the council is deserving to know what the town should provide as far as law enforcement in our community. Do we have an answer yet?
The charter establishes that we kept police services, it can be contracted, it can be provided by a police department, there isn't a particular, we have to provide it, but how we provide it is up to policy decisions, there's not a legal issue with it besides just the logistics, this is a possible solution. Again, the aspects of it are the council, policy decisions. All we're trying, all Scott and I are trying to do is inform you guys of what some of the logistics that go along with it. Because like I said, the 911 thing is kind of, that's the headache, but I don't think it's insurmountable, I think it's just something that both parties need to be aware of and look into to make it.
We can't, we can't, we can look at all parts of this and know that, gee, this sounds pretty good, or it doesn't, but until we can work out the 911, that, I think that has to be one of our primary concerns, because we can't lose that. We've got to know somebody, there's some body has to take that on, whether somehow this town can keep it and keep running it, or it goes to the county, or, or what we do, but let's not lose, I guess my point is, let's not lose sight that that's one of the components of this agreement.
And I would, I would also mention too, the county, the town of Lakeview and the county have always worked together on 911 dispatch, because that's how the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement, was created and everything else, so I think it would behoove probably the town council and the county commissioners to come together and say, okay, this is the problem we've got here, if the Lakeview Police Department goes away, what makes the most sense for both bodies? Because I think if, like, for example, if the, if the special district route wants to go there, then that should probably be a joint effort between the town and the, how do you do that? If it's going to be the police department, that's one way, or it's going to end up under the auspices of a law enforcement agency, then it needs to be part of it as well. And I don't think it's fair to blindside, Mike, without looking for more information, I don't think any decision should be made at this point at all, until that logistic, because it, again, the county needs to know to make sure that they want to take that on, and Sheriff Taylor, so that's not a fair, that's not fair to ambush him with that information until he has a chance to look at it and know what's there and what's getting into it.
I don't think we're ambushing him, I think what we're trying to say is, we know this is the elephant in the room, and we need to figure out how that's going to be handled. We can't agree to something until that's really decided. I don't, am I wrong about that?
No.
I think we have to know what's going to happen with 911, or you lose your dispatch, you know... for, you know, that didn't...
And back to ser- back to services, because I didn't hear that answered, other than, Jeff, you said that we provide these services as enhanced services?
No, I didn't say enhanced, I said we have, our, the town charter specifies that we provide law enforcement services within the town boundaries. The sheriff's department also does, that's part of what we pay property taxes for. So that is, the sheriff has nev- they've never taken the position that they don't provide services or anything else like that, I've never heard anything like that, I've never... So that that, there's not, there's no accusations or anything that way. The sheriff's department's always been a partner with...
No, but in the last meeting you weren't here and what I was referring to, Jeff, was what he read to us of what, without a contract, what he would provide to the town of Lakeview. And that's all I ask him to repeat that, I don't, I guess we'll go back and review that in our next work session. I just would like to know exactly what our sheriff feels that the county's citizens here in Lakeview deserve from him and the county as far as our law enforcement. That's all I'm asking, and I would think that's easy to find out, but I'll I'll have to research it myself because it hasn't been available.
That's not, that's not a legal issue that I can get to you as far as, it's really not a legal issue, that's something that's more important.
So what we do is enhance services though, that's exactly what we're paying six hundred and five thousand dollars on top of his services for our citizens in Lakeview. So if we decide that, I mean, he told us last last week that he couldn't provide for six hundred and five thousand and he's telling us again, twenty-four hour service. That's what citizens came to us and said they wanted when they raised the ruckus as to our protection, we want twenty-four hour service, even with sheriff's services, we're not gonna get that. He guaranteed us that last time.
I did, I did not.
You told us we're not going to get twenty-four hour service.
Not with the four.
Not with the four, you're right. You just got to saying I guaranteed you that you're gonna get twenty-four hour service.
I think that he did say that, but in not the correct order.
Okay.
So can can you be better explaining why we...
But you were saying there would be some nights when it would really be up to twenty-two.
Why we would lose, if we went this route, why we would lose 911, the ability to actually function?
Yeah, we are not allowed to run it anymore at that point.
If we don't have... We don't have our own police department?
Yes.
Although we are still contracted to provide a police department through just another agency?
No, we're not.
We're doing away with police department totally.
Darwin, what we're doing is contracted by law enforcement services, but we can't be in char- what the problem is, the town without having a law enforcement agency associated with it, can't be in charge of 911.
And how come we can't contract that, being in charge of out to...
Because we're not allowed, we don't have the authority, once, once you lose that authority, then it reverts back to somebody else, either a special district or a another law enforcement agency.
And that's the way the state is set up.
Correct, that's state, that's a state level requirement.
That's the way the state...
How we could come, district, like Klamath County, 911, that's its own statewide or county wide district. Do they operate under the authority of a law enforcement agency?
Because they're a special district, they just like the...
They need it?
The tribes and stuff, you have to...
Scott, you were gonna mention something, there was another, there's another option?
Another option is to contract with Klamath County or Harney County for dispatching services. Or Deschutes County. Or Deschutes County, yep. And they would take all the calls and everything, or they may just take 911 and send whoever down here and say, now, where do you want the calls to go to?
Well, and then the user fee is a lot for that too.
But or you can have the dispatch center in in Klamath Falls or whatever, but you're gonna talk radio towers and links to get all that.
And we would be paying them a user fee or a fee.
Yeah, well, you'd pay them...
User fee for them dispatching.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's either that or we have to have...
And we have no idea how much that would cost either.
But if it if it fell back to another agency and not a special district and we said, or the state said, the state...
It has to be a police department.
Yeah, but if, say if it's the sheriff's department, just hypothetically, not saying if they're willing to take, but say if the state said and we had no other options for the surrounding counties or special district, the sheriff's department took it and then said, look, well, I'm gonna take it because I have to take it, because that's what the state's saying, but you're still gonna run it like you normally would've been running it. What's what's the big, I mean, I don't, I, like, when we had a police chief, was it his job description, they're gonna be managing the 911 dispatch?
It isn't the fact that it's a police chief, it's the fact we have the agency to begin with, that's the...
I know, but I mean, there was no real function that the chief, police chief took on when he accepted the job.
By state ordinance, a law enforcement unit, as we are entitled as a police department, he's a law enforcement unit here in Oregon, the state police is a law enforcement unit, and it has to be a law enforcement unit that runs dispatch.
I get that, I'm just saying...
So we can't do it, we we lose our, that's what we're doing, if we're in the way of our police department.
But what I'm just saying is, what what actual work is the sheriff's department, if they put that under their umbrella and then we still manage it at status quo, how we have been managing it, other than now it's under the sheriff's department because there's no other group where they take it?
The issue becomes then that they all have to become county employees. We 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 can't be in the management business, I mean, the employees can stay there, but they have...
They can't contract back now with us on that kind of a whole, just from how we were running it?
That's something I would have to look into, that I'm not sure.
It seems like it should function, I mean, it should be able to work out that way.
But I don't know, I I don't, I don't know if they're allowed... That's the one thing that I would that I would have to check into and I would have some suspicions that you can't, because the idea behind those, the reason that they have the requirements that are there are for because of what dispatch has access to, it's just like the LEDs training and stuff like that, there, the state is very concerned about who has access to criminal justice inform- information, LEDs, everything else. So that's why they want persons ultimately responsible to be trusted personnel, like, for example, the sheriff or a chief of police or something along those lines, because these guys have demonstrated that they have the more character, the, you know, other thing, the training and stuff like that to deal with these kind of situations.
But they're certified through DPSST, they still have standing lots of records.
Correct.
Allow them to access that information.
Correct, but again, it's, there's still the idea of the oversight of that higher level authority.
Was that being done though? Was that actually a task of the the city police department?
It's a task of the city because we have the city police department, that's how it was handled, that's why a director was set up.
And then there, also there's user agreements that you signed with CGIS, LEDs and NCIC. That's where they assigned the ORI to the police department and he is the, he signed that he would be the administrator. And that agreement has to be in place by all agencies that use LEDs, NCIC, CGIS. I don't know if there's a way around it, but...
Right, it's something I would...
We're just starting.
It's something I would have to do some more research on, so exactly how that works. It's not a no, that's what I'm trying to get across everybody, it's just, it's something we need more information.
More information.
And with with our time almost expired as far as our work session and what we've talked about primarily is contracting our full six hundred and five thousand dollars out of the county, we know we have a lot more discussions to look at. I remind our council that we've not looked at other avenues that I guess the sheriff has told me he's not interested in, and that is situations where we would have our own police department and he would supervise it for it, be, it's either contracted or not. And so we're in the dire straits that we were in before we had this special meeting and so we'll continue, I guess, so I have an understanding of where we're at with our needs in the town of Lakeview. We'll continue with the sheriff providing services as he does to county residents and if we want enhanced services above our one police officer that we have right now to take care of, the things that I would think the sheriff would not be willing to take care of, and that would be our own ordinances that vary from the state's ordinances and the county ordinances, that would be the only thing that we should have to police for right now. And that's all that our enhanced services should have to take care of, so... But as far as the criminal and all, I think that's what he described, he was ready to continue to provide services when he was sending a letter to you, if it's back, we didn't contract out. So I just wanna make sure I have an understanding of where we're at, what we're heading into, but we didn't solve it in the work session and there's a lot more as we all know to discuss, so...
We're gonna discuss the fact, if we don't, we have to enter into some degree of some sort of...
That's what, that's what we needed to do three weeks ago.
Well, the biggest problem is we can't get anybody as a police chief or...
To do it, yeah, nobody wants to contract out with us, yeah. Well, now the thing is, nobody wants to contract out with us unless we give them our full six hundred and five thousand dollar budget.
Well, and I think that can be tweaked, I mean...
I would hope it's...
I mean, you're not every year gonna get a new car, I mean, you said that. So that's not, you know, that four hundred, or whatever, no, that, whatever it is for a vehicle, you know, I mean, that's not gonna be every year.
No, and six hundred and five thousand dollars, I'll remind, the council is an awful lot of money to pay for enhanced services to provide the enforcement of your ordinances in the town that differ from the county and the state because he's in charge of enforcing county and state. So therefore, we have ordinances in the town, we need to go through all those, I mentioned that a meeting or two ago, coming back from the LOC, we need to go through every one of our ordinances and find out how many we need to throw out the window, they're no longer existent or so outdated. That's something we need to do, is clean house as a council. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we fork over any amount of dollars for whatever services we decide we want to enhance our community with above what we're being provided by law enforcement in our county right now. That's my take on things, though.
Just a question, who who supervises state?
We ask him to, he's been doing it up to now, I guess he's fixing to send you a letter, that's what he told you in the last meeting, and that letter is what we need to see what he's gonna provide. And then I guess we need to find out what we need to do with they. I, you know, we're we're no longer a police unit unless we hire a police chief and we were three weeks ago still in the process of recruiting. I don't know where we're at on that, you had hired another police officer since then, so I know we are two officers, not just one, so...
And so far, we haven't had any applications.
But we need to continue to recruit, have we recruited across the state line?
It is still out there.
There's a lot of officers in Modoc County that might just come here and...
On the chief's, chief, you know, the chief, the party in chiefs association, chief of police association, as a website, LEDs has a website, I mean, there's several websites that they...
But our primary has been here in the state.
Right.
And we found that we have to train no matter what, so we could take an officer from another state, we expand up to rebuild.
All right, let's adjourn the work session because we're not gonna be...